Myka Kako and I'll be joining today's Monday, March 14, 2022, 1:00 PM AEN Committee Hearing. And here in CR 224 and video conference, which includes the audio and video of remote participants. It's being streamed live on YouTube. You'll find the links to viewing options for all the Senate meetings on the live and on-demand video page of the legislature's website at capital.waupun.gov. And in the unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to major technical difficulties, the committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business at 1:30 PM on Wednesday, March 16, during our AEN video conference time slot. Any public notice will be posted on the legislature's website. For our Zoom testifiers, all testifier audio will be muted and video disabled until shortly before it's your turn to testify. And if there are any temporary technical glitches during your turn to testify via Zoom, we may have to move on to the next person due to time constraints. We appreciate your understanding. And we remind you that the committee has your written testimony. And because of our 90-minute time limit for each of the AEN hearings, there will be a two-minute time limit for all testifiers. We'll have a virtual countdown timer on the Zoom screen, so please be aware of the timer. I'll be announcing that testifiers should be providing testimony via Zoom and in-person. The completeness of the testifiers, along with all of the written testimony, please go to the legislature's website. And you'll find the link on the status page for the measure. And we apologize if the closed captioning does not accurately transcribe the names. Joining me today is committee members Senator Rhodes and Senator Acasio so far. And so we'll start off with the first measure, which is HB 1499. Requires the Department of Agriculture to partner with a Hawaii entity to establish a pilot USDA harmonized gap food safety training and certification program to help small and medium-sized farms obtain the United States Department of Ag's harmonized good agriculture practices certification. First up on our testifier list is we have the Department of Agriculture.
For Karen, it's been two years.
Yes, it's been a while. Give us online. It's our first hearing back live, so we're all getting reacquainted here.
Aloha Chair.
Nice to see you in person.
Nice to see you in person and members of the committee. Felicia Moberg, Geyser Chairperson, Hawaii Department of Ag. We support the intent. We stand on our written testimony and we offer a recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. You'll be able to stick around for any questions. Great. Thank you, Phillips. Next is Micah Munikata from Ulapona Initiative. Micah, there he is.
Good afternoon, Chair. Vice Chair members of the committee, Micah Munikata, on behalf of the Ulapona Initiative. We'll stand on our testimony and strong support of this measure. Thank you.
Mahalo, Micah. Next is Lauren Zerbal from the Hawaii Food Industry Association.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. I'm Alexis Chapman for HFIA. We stand on our support of this measure and are available for questions.
Thank you. Let's see, we also have Brian Miyamoto from the Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Good afternoon, Chair. A little nervous, sir.
We're all friends, just relax.
Good afternoon, Chair Gabbard.
Aloha.
Senator Acasio, Senator Rhodes, Brian Miyamoto here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. Thank you for hearing this important bill, food safety, extremely important and extremely challenging, especially for small and medium-sized farmers. We appreciate the legislature's continued support. We will stand on our written testimony and strong support of this this measure and the continued support from the legislature to help our small and medium farmers comply with food safety requirements. Thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Mahalo, Lauren. Next is Kevin Kelly from the North Shore Economic Vitality Partnership.
Thank you, Chair Gabbard. Appreciate it. I'm Kevin Kelly, President, North Shore Economic Vitality Partnership. We stand on our testimony. I would like to add, however, that there's a Senate Bill 2960 very similar to this measure that provides funding for food safety certification training. This bill is is written to provide a to start a pilot project for food safety training and certification program. Subtle difference, but it provides more permanence for food safety training and assistance to small and medium-sized farmers in Hawaii. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you very much again for hearing this.
Thank you, Kevin. Next is Nicole Delacy from the Hawaii Cattlemen's Council.
Thank you, Chair Gabbard, Vice Chair Nishihara, and members of the committee. Nicole Delacy, on behalf of the Hawaii Cattlemen's Council, we stand on our written testimony and support as this would help us move towards our goal of increasing food production safely. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone present live or online who registered to testify on the measure, but have not called you? Okay, see now, members, are there any questions?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Senator Acasio.
I have a question for Department of Ag. If you could just state the recommendation that you had mentioned.
As stated in our testimony, it's highly advisable that the educational functions of the program be separated from the enforcement and auditing functions to mitigate the risks presented by our arrangement with FDA for the food safety rules. As such, we recommend that any appropriation for education functions be made into the budget for the department's chairperson's office. This would separate funding for education from the funding for enforcement by the Quality Assurance Division. So that's our recommendation.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Who else? Okay, moving on to the next measure. HB 1714 HD1 appropriates funds to the Department of Agriculture for the mitigation and control of the two-lined spittlebug recovery of the rangelands and pastures damaged by the invasive pest and research. And by the way, on the last measure, there were 17 testifiers in support, zero opposition, and three comments. So for this, first up is Walter Bowen from the UH. Walter Bowen?
Yes, good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. On behalf of CETAR, I would like to say that we stand in support of our written testimony in support of of this measure. And I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Walter. I believe that's all we have. So we suppose we have. Oh, CDs. Micah Munikata, actually, Micah Munikata, Ulapona.
Thank you, Chair. Ulapona will stand on its testimony and support of this measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Micah. Kendall Matsuyoshi from Local Food Coalition.
Aloha, Chair Gabbard, Vice Chair Nishihara, and members of the committee. Kendall Matsuyoshi, on behalf of the Local Food Coalition, will stand on our written testimony in support of the measure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Department of Ag.
Mahalo, Chair. The department stands on its written testimony and support, and we're available to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Phillips. Brian Miyamoto, Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Setting the standards, Phillips. Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Brian Miyamoto here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. We will stand on our written testimony in support of, again, another important measure to help our environment and our livestock industry. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Brian, Nicole Delacy from the Hawaii Cattlemen's Council.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to really express my thanks for this building heard. It's a really important one for the Hawaii Cattlemen's Council and the ranching community in general. If I can pick one bright spot to this, you have my written testimony with all the background information. But one good thing is actually that we've caught this early on, which means that the investment in addressing this issue is going to go far. You guys all know that invasive species, once it's out of control, it's difficult to bring back into control. So it is contained. We have been working on it. And we're appreciative of the funding that has been given to us in previous years. But in order for it to continue to go in the right direction, we do need this funding, and we thank you for considering this. Mahalo.
Thank you. Okay. So we have for the testifiers, we have 21 in testifying in support, zero opposed, and one comment. I have a question for Walter Bowen, UH, CETAR. Perhaps you can answer this, Walter. So I see the the two-lined spittlebug. It was first detected in Kailua, Kona in 2016, correct?
That's correct, yes.
And I'm just curious, any other details like where it came from and how it got into Hawaii?
No, not that I have at hand. It's it's I was in South America when it first appeared in South America. And it's been hard to discern the exact source of of this, of the two-lined spittlebug, which first attacked tropical pastures in South America and has eventually ended up here on the Big Island.
Okay. So you don't know. How about Department of Ag, any in your
What what I will do is I I will be happy to send to you more background, too.
Yeah, I appreciate that. That's fine.
Chair, if you would call for Dr. Hellmuth Rowe.
Dr. Hellmuth Rowe? Maybe.
Either he or Darcy Oishi might will be available Zoom to answer the question.
Darcy Oishi or Hellmuth Rhodes? Okay, that's fine. So we'll wait to hear back from Walter Bowen and some more background. All right, let's move on. HB 2062 Emergency Loan Revolving Fund. This establishes the ag emergency loan revolving fund to be administered by the Department of Ag to fund Class D emergency loans, provides a separate source of funding for emergency ag loans. Let's see, first up is Micah Munikata, Ulapona.
Thank you, Chair. Ulapona will stand on its testimony and strong support of this measure. Appreciate your leadership, Chair, and and always hearing a lot of these bills to support the Department of Ag and really to continue to show commitment to our new beginning farmers as well as our all of our farmers across the state that really need support when when emergencies do strike. I think a lot of people tend to react to the emergency and and forget that, you know, farmers have invested quite a lot of money and effort into their crops when these disasters do come about, and and a lot of it gets lost. So, you know, this resource is really critical to reestablishing one's operation and and having them become more of a viable future for for our state as we look to continue our our food security goals and and meeting a lot of the needs of our community. So truly appreciate your leadership, Chair, and hearing this measure and look forward to your support through the rest of this session. Thank you, Chair.
Mahalo, Micah. Next is Department of Ag, Phillips.
Thank you, Chair, and members of the committee. We stand in strong support of this bill. You know, as we stated in our testimony, that we have issued 31 emergency loans of totaling over $2 million in the past three years. We lived through 2018 where we had to deal with lava and flood and fire disasters. And then in 2020, you know, we had to deal with a human disaster, which was the pandemic. So we have issued emergency loans from the same fund that we also issue operating loans. And those emergency requests have ranged anywhere from $10,000 to half a million dollars. We usually, in these situations, by the third fiscal quarter, we run out of money. So would appreciate your consideration and supporting this measure. Thank you. Available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Phillips. Next is Brian Miyamoto from the Farm Bureau.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Brian Miyamoto here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. You do have a written testimony in front of you. I'm just going to read a couple of things. Global epidemic, pests, disease, high winds, thunderstorms, hurricanes, fires, floods, earthquakes, lava flow, fog, other volcanic activity, droughts, and tidal waves. Just a few of the emergencies that our farmers may have to deal with. So we do appreciate and we do ask for strong support for this measure. And now we have supply chain issues and shipping disruptions. All issues that affect our farmers and ranchers' ability to produce the food, feed, fiber, and fuel that we want produced here in our agriculture community here in Hawaii. So thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Nicole Delacy?
Thank you. Hawaii Cattlemen's Council stands on our testimony.
Thank you, Nicole. Okay. Anyone present live or online who registered to testify but weren't called on? Members, any questions? Okay, moving on to the next measure. The HB 2307 HD1 appropriates funds to the Department of Ag to provide education and support to local businesses regarding the federal food and growth administration's industry guidance on colored sea salt. First up is Lauren Zerbal from the Hawaii Food Industry Association.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. I'm Alexis Chapman for HFIA. Just wanted to give a quick background on this. So in 2015, the FDA changed rules regarding food additives. And it was due to an oversight that our local colored sea salt ingredients, the alea and the lava, were left off of the ingredient list. Our local sea salt companies have already spent thousands of dollars and invested a lot of hours and manpower in rectifying this situation. And now they're at the point where this industry really needs the help of the legislature in order to survive. We all want to increase local food production, right? That's a goal everybody shares. And this is a local food product, and it needs your help to keep going and keep existing in the state. So thank you for the opportunity to testify, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Department of Ag, Phillips.
Mahalo, Chair, members of the committee. We stand on our written testimony, supporting the intent, and we offer comments. We're available to answer questions.
Thank you, Phillips. Brian Miyamoto from the Farm Bureau.
Thank you, Chair. The Hawaii Farm Bureau will stand on its written testimony and support.
Okay, thank you. That's it for the testifiers. Members, any questions? A question for the Hawaii Food Industry Association.
Hi.
Sorry, your name again?
Alexis Chapman.
Alexis, okay.
Yes.
You said it was an oversight during the FDA rule change in 2015.
Yes.
Can you elaborate on that? And whose whose fault was that?
I believe it was just a result of how the FDA was classifying ingredients at that time. And that, for whatever reason, and this was happened at the federal level, so I don't have, you know, insight into it, but for whatever reason, they did not include the ingredients that give our local sea salt here their colors.
It wasn't an anti-Hawaiian thing?
I don't think so, no, not as far as I'm aware.
Okay.
But it was, I mean, to the extent that maybe they weren't as aware as they should have been of these particular products. And because these are not just economically important products, they're culturally and historically important. And it is it is really a shame that, you know, it's had to go through this process to get them back on the list.
Mahalo, Alexis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, HB 2256 Working Group. Department of Environmental Protection. This establishes a Department of Environmental Protection on July 1, 2026, creates a department working group to address the logistics required for the state to establish a Department of Environmental Protection. Requires the working group to submit a report to the legislature prior to the 2025 regular session. First up is the Board of Water Supply.
Aloha, Chair, and members of the committee. This is Kathy Mitchell with the Board of Water Supply. We stand on our written testimony and support and offer amendments to bill.
Okay, thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Next is Nona Futhun with the State Environmental Advisory Council.
Mahalo, Chair Gabbard and members of the committee for the opportunity to testify. The State Environmental Advisory Council will stand on its testimony and support of this bill.
Thank you. Next is Mary Alice Evans with the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development.
Thank you, Chair. The Office offers comments, and I want to make a couple of highlights. The Office of Planning and Sustainable Development believes that Hawaii's sustainability, climate change mitigation, and climate change adaptation requires a multi-agency approach through all branches, departments, and agencies of the state of Hawaii's government and its counties. We believe that the legislature has provided strong statewide legislative laws that offer the provide for statewide coordination to make this important work as a state. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Alice. Next is Kirsten Turner from the Hawaii State Energy Office.
Mahalo, Chair Gabbard and Vice Chair Nishihara and members of the committee. The Hawaii State Energy Office offers we stand on our testimony, but we'd also like to acknowledge the experts at the State Department of Health in support of this bill as long as it doesn't replace or adversely impact the priorities indicated in the executive supplemental budget. If this bill moves forward, the State Energy Office is willing to participate in such a working group, and we appreciate the addition in the HD1 version of the comptroller and the directors of the Department of Human Resources and Finance and in the Environmental Protection Working Group. We would also recommend, however, the addition of DAGs and also DBED. So thank you for allowing us to testify.
Okay, thank you, Kirsten. Next is the Environmental Health Administration. The environmental.
Good, oops. Good afternoon. Sorry, it doesn't seem. Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Kathleen Ho, on behalf of the Department of Health, we stand on our written testimony in support of this bill and are available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Pua Ayu from the Deep from DLR.
Hello, Chair. I'm sorry, my camera is not working. The department will stand on its testimony offering comments.
Okay, thank you, Pua. And that's all the testifiers on this measure, with their eight in support, one opposed, four with comments. Members, any questions? Okay, moving on to HB 2466 HD2 relating to taro exempts the gross proceeds or income received from the sale of any product resulting from the cultivation and production of unprocessed taro in the state from the general excise tax. First up is Isaac Choi from Department of Taxation.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members. Josh Michaels on behalf of the Director of Tax. The department will stand on its testimony opposing the current form of the measure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Nathan Chi, Deputy AG.
Good afternoon, Chair Gabbard and members of the committee. The Attorney General will stand on its testimony pointing out constitutional concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Penny Levin.
Yes. Aloha. Aloha, Senator Gabbard and committee members. I stand on my testimony and support and offer some amendments that were based on the comments from the Department of Ag and the Department of Taxation, as well as the AG's office.
Penny, excuse me, can you turn your camera on?
I'm sorry, I have a really old computer that actually the camera doesn't work. I call it my, and I just got out of the taro patch, so I'm kind of new to this. But yes, I'm available for any questions, and as I said, we offer amendments that we hope will resolve the concerns of the agencies.
Mahalo, Penny. Next is Brian Miyamoto from Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Thank you, Chair. The Hawaii Farm Bureau will stand on its written testimony and support of this measure.
Okay, Tom Yamachika for the Tax Foundation of Hawaii. Okay, not here. Department of Ag, Phillips.
Mahalo, Chair and members of the committee. The department stands on its written testimony. We support the intent and defer to the Department of Taxation. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all of our testifiers. We had 15 in support, one opposed, and four with comments. Members, are there any questions? Okay, moving on to the next measure, HB 2418 HD2. This amends the focus, scope, and management of the Agribusiness Development Corporation, ADC. Appropriates funds to ADC for consulting, for planning, and accounting, and for security on ADC property. Appeals a requirement that all agricultural projects, ag development plans, and project facility programs developed by ADC be approved by the Board of Agriculture before implementation. First up is Jimmy Nakatani from ADC.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Agribusiness stands on its written testimony. Support the intent with comments. I'll be here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Jimmy. Next is Anne Frederick from the Hawaii Alliance for Progressive Action.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Annie Frederick, on behalf of HOPA, in strong support of HB 2418 with proposed amendments, and I'll briefly summarize. HOPA is a statewide organization that is headquartered on Kauai. Our work originated when communities on the west side of Kauai began getting sick from pesticide drift originating from agrochemical fields. These companies are anchor tenants on the ADC's West Kauai lands and enjoy the use of water infrastructure under the purview of the ADC. This allocation of public lands and waters is very much a form of public subsidy. However, the agrochemical industry has a concerning track record of pesticide use violations in Hawaii. According to the state-sponsored Joint Fact-Finding Group study, prior to the passage of Act 45 in 2018, which banned the use of chlorpyrifos in Hawaii, the tenants of ADC lands in Kekeha were using approximately three times the national average of chlorpyrifos approximately 100 feet from Kekeha Hawaiian homesteads. This is troubling for a couple of reasons. I've included many citations for peer-reviewed epidemiological studies in our written testimony that clearly document that organophosphates such as chlorpyrifos drift up to a mile and that exposure due exposure up to approximately half a mile is known to cause serious and permanent neurological damage, especially in developing children's brains. Additionally, Clean Water Act violations have occurred from the illegal discharge of pesticides runoff from the same ADC lands. It was only through litigation that the excessive water diversions from the tenants on these ADC lands were addressed and streams were restored. It has only been in response to ongoing community pressure, litigation, and state regulation that these harmful practices of intensive pesticide drift, contamination of near-shore waters, and the dewatering of streams have been addressed. This bill begins to bring the And the dewatering of streams have been addressed. This bill begins to bring the ADC into greater alignment with the state's own goals of increasing food production for local consumption. However, we must prioritize doing so sustainably so that these lands are managed for future abundance. Thank you.
Next is Jerry Dieter from Hawaii Sea. Department of AG, Phyllis.
Mahalo Chair and members of the committee. We stand on our written testimony supporting the intent. And we're here to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bronson Ozawa from the Hawaii Food Plus Policy. Here Brian Miyamoto, Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Thank you Chair, the Hawaii Farm Bureau will stand on its written testimony in support.
Okay. That's all of our testifiers. There were 33 in support, one opposed, three with comments. Members, are there any questions? Okay, moving on. To HB 2280 HD2. Specializes relating to real property specifies that planned to me associations cannot prohibit or unreasonably restrict the use of a member's enclosed yard area. Or personal agriculture. Okay, first up. Actually, we have no testifiers in person or online. There were one, one in support and one opposed. So moving on to HB 2061. Relating to the Animal Industry Special Fund adds new sources of revenues generated by the state. Veterinary Laboratory and Animal Disease Control Branch is sources for the Animal Industry Special Fund. First up is Nicole Galassi from the Cattlemen's Council. Thank you Nicole, Department of AG, Phyllis.
Mahalo Chair and members of the committee. The department stands on its written testimony in strong support. This measure will provide some resources for the department to support the state veterinary laboratory. By providing stakeholders veterinary diagnostics services within the state. Reducing delays in obtaining results from veterinary laboratories located outside of Hawaii. And may eventually generate revenue to fund the operations of our animal industry. We're available to answer any questions. Mahalo.
Mahalo Phyllis. Next is Brian Miyamoto, Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Thank you Chair, the Hawaii Farm Bureau will stand on its written testimony in support.
Thank you. That's all of our testifiers. We had four in support, one opposed and zero comments. Any questions members? Okay, next is. House Bill 1810 HD1. Relating to the Environmental Advisory Council defines what constitutes a quorum for the Environmental Advisory Council, specifies the number of votes required. To make any action of the council valid. First up is Leslie Segundo. From the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development.
Good, good afternoon. Good afternoon Chair and Vice Chair and members of the committee. The Office of Planning Sustainable Development stands on its written testimony. I will be available for any questions if you have any. Thank you.
That was in support, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Next is Nona Thun from the State Environmental Advisory Council.
Aloha Chair Gabbard and members of the committee. Nona Thun on behalf of the Environmental Advisory Council. Just want to say thank you very much to this committee for hearing this bill. This is something that would greatly help the council to continue to do its business and we stand on our written testimony and support. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them for you. Mahalo.
Thank you. That's all of our testifiers. Two in support, zero opposed. Any questions members? Moving on to HB 1712 HD1 relating to ag lands prohibits the citing of waste disposal facilities on important ag lands and. Ag lands with a Class A and B productivity rating. First up is Roger Babcock from the City County of Honolulu.
Aloha Chair and committee members. Mike O'Keefe with the City's Department of Environmental Services. We will stand on our written testimony in opposition of this bill, but I would like to highlight a few of its main points. The City's Department of Environmental Services. Is under a 2019 decision and order from the State's Land Use Commission. To name a replacement landfill for the Waimea Ala Galch sanitary landfill by the end of 2022. And close Waimea Ala Galch by March 2028. Now there are several state and federal restrictions on where a landfill can be cited currently. That make, make locating the site for next landfill very difficult. And this bill makes that process even more difficult and may entirely rule out all. Available land for the next landfill. I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you Roger. Next is Rodney Funicoshi from OPSD.
Okay, good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair and members. The Office of Planning and Sustainable Development offers comments on the measure. We have a couple of concerns. We understand and support the intent of the bill. One concern is that the prohibition may apply to all agricultural district lands. And preclude the use of special permits on the lower quality agricultural lands. As such, there should be specific reference to the sole qualities in the Land Study Bureau and the, as is done in the Senate version of the bill. 2944 SD1. But we are also concerned with the prohibition of uses in IL being specified in this portion of the statute. IL designation does not of itself allow or prohibit specific uses. I recommend that the bill be amended to delete section two in its entirety. If waste disposal sites are prohibited in the ag district. They will automatically be prohibited on any agricultural district lands designated as IL. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you Rodney. Department of Agriculture.
Mahalo Chair, Vice Chair and members of the committee. The department stands on its written testimony supporting the intent and are available to answer any questions.
Thank you Phyllis. Brian Miyamoto, Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Brian Miyamoto here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. You have a written testimony in support and we thank you Chair for hearing this on the companion bill. SB 2944. And as you can see from. The bill, we are only asking for most productive lands to be protected. Quite honestly, when the Farm Bureau first talked about this, we, we actually looked at all that. But we understand that those pose a challenge, especially here in the city of Kana, Hawaii. So we are asking for. A, B and IL lands to be restricted from. Landfills or waste disposal sites. We also want to protect our aquifers. Again, the state has a goal. To double food production. We also have a clean renewable energy goal. But a lot of times those goals conflict with each other and for land use. Again, farm bills can be for the legislature every year. Asking to protect our most productive agricultural lands for agriculture production. A landfill is not productive on a most productive lands. Thank you for this opportunity to testify.
All right. Next is Nicole Galassi from the Hawaii Cattlemen's Council.
Thank you Chair, Vice Chair and members of the committee. Nicole Galassi on behalf of the Hawaii Cattlemen's Council. We stand on our written testimony in support of this bill. We just want to make sure that agricultural lands stay in agricultural production. There are always competing uses, but like the testified before me said, we have a goal to increase food production. Need to keep these agricultural lands in agricultural production. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that's it on our testifiers. Members, any questions? It's seven in support, three opposed, one with comments. And moving on to the last bill on the one o'clock agenda is HB 1644 HD1. Relating to environmental protection bans the manufacture, sale or distribution for sale or use of wraps and liners, plates, food boats, pizza boxes. And firefighting phones that contain perfluoro alcohol and polyfluoro alcohol substances. Okay, we have first up Nick Stanley from Par Hawaii.
Yes, aloha Chief Gabbard and Vice Chair Nishihara. My name is Nick Stanley. I'm actually Par Hawaii's Fire Chief. I'm responsible for providing all the required industrial firefighting capabilities. Needed to ensure the safety of our refinery emergency responders. Employees and surrounding communities. And the companies operating critical assets. Par Hawaii operates the only refinery in the state of Hawaii. Our emergency response organization has concerns with this bill. That could adversely impact the safety of our employees and our surrounding communities. We invest significantly to ensure that we are equipped to respond in the event. Of an emergency such as a petroleum fire at our refinery. And we do have an in-house industrial fire brigade. That can be mobilized as a first response team and fire emergencies. But we appreciate the intent of the bill to ban PFOS containing firefighting foam. We would like to raise a cautionary unintended consequence of our responders being unable. To put out a petroleum fire with alternative firefighting foams in a timely manner. We ask for your consideration to limit the prohibition of the use of firefighting foams. That contain intentionally added PFOS specifically for testing and training purposes. But allow the continued use of these foams in the event that it's necessary for a large scale fire event. At the refinery or in the state. Thank you for allowing me to testify and I'm here for any questions.
Thank you Nick. Next is Tina Yamaki from the retail merchants of Hawaii. Not here. That's all of our testifiers. We had 14 in support, one opposed. Five comments. Members, are there any questions? Seeing none, we'll take a brief recess for some decision making. Okay, aloha. We're back. Considering the bills on the one o'clock agenda with some decision making. Starting off. With HB 1499. You know, as the food safety. Certification of farms is trying to align itself with the Food Safety Modernization Act of 2011. I think this is a. It's a good opportunity to expand their production and increase demand for locally grown foods. So the chair's recommendation would be to pass. This measure as is. Any concerns? Comments? Chair votes aye, Vice Chair.
Vice Chair votes aye.
Aye.
Andrew Rhodes.
Aye.
Dr. Fadella.
Aye.
Thank you members. Next measure HB 1714 relating to. Lion spittle bugs. Yes, they're cute little critters. But they are wreaking havoc on our pasture lands. And so the chair's recommendation would be to pass as is. Any questions, concerns? Chair votes aye, Vice Chair.
If the members present, any voting with reservations or in opposition, seeing none. With the exception of Stan Fadella. With excuse.
Thank you members. Thank you members. Next measure is HB 2062 relating to agricultural loans. Chair's recommendation would be to pass this measure as is. Comments, concerns? Chair votes aye, Vice Chair.
We have the members present with the exception of Senator Fadella. Any voting with reservations or in opposition, seeing non-motions adopted.
Thank you members. Next is HB 2307 HD1 related to food safety having to do with our. Sea salt. Chair's recommendation will be to pass this measure as is. Concerns, comments? Chair votes aye, Vice Chair.
We have the members present, any voting with opposition or reservation to non-motion adopted.
Thank you members. And next is HB 2256 HD1 relating to the Department of Environmental Protection. So on this one, we're going to take the, some. Expand the working group with some suggestions from the Energy Office. Various other groups. But I'll add to the existing nine members of the working group. We want to add, amend this to add the Director of DBED. Or the Directors Designee. Also the Director of the Department of Accounting and General Services or Directors Designee. Third one we want to add is a representative from the Hawaii Environmental Advisory Council. And the fourth one we want to add. Is a representative from the Commission on Water Resource Management. So that'll make a total of 13 on the working group. Okay, any questions or concerns? None? Chair votes aye, Vice Chair.
If the members present. Voting to pass bill with amendments. Any voting in opposition with. Reservations, seeing non-motions adopted.
Thank you members. Then moving on to HB 2466 relating to taro. On this one, the chair's recommendation would be to pass with amendments. For amendments that were actually given to us by a taro farmer. And so. In keeping with the concerns by the Attorney General about the Commerce Clause. Section 2, Chapter 237. I will strike the language of in the state from the bill. And then. We want to add exemption for the cultivation and production of unprocessed taro. So in this section, it says. There should be exempted from and excluded from the measure of the taxes imposed by this chapter of all the gross proceeds or income received. From the sale of any product resulting from the cultivation and production of unprocessed taro. Here's the amendment we want to add, add this language. Both or where value-added whose primary ingredients is taro or taro leaf. As I said earlier, cross out the three words in the state. And then continuing, this exemption shall not apply to bulk buyers or shippers of raw or value-added taro products. Supermarkets or big box stores. They'll also define primary ingredient. Is defined as the ingredient of highest percentage of product and listed first on a label. Okay, any discussion? And thank you again to Penny Levin for her. Suggestion for that amendment. Chair votes aye, Vice Chair.
Members present, any voting with reservations, seeing opposition, seeing non-motions adopted.
Thank you members. And then moving on to HB 2418. And then moving on to HB 2418 on the ADC. Basically amending the focus and scope and management of ADC to reflect current state of ag and Hawaii and focus on statewide needs for export and consumption of local ag products. So the the yeah, that's not an amendment. That's just describing what the bill does. So yeah, any discussion or concerns? Chair vote side, Vice Chair.
Okay, members present any voting in opposition or reservations, seeing non-motions adopted.
Thank you members. HB 2280 HD2, Plan the Community Associations. When do you recommend that we pass this as is? There was
Yeah, the members present.
Any concerns or questions? On the recommendation to pass. Chair vote side, Vice Chair.
Okay. One, two. I know, I'm going to call out the names because it's one we turned. Santa Gabbard, both eyes, Santa Nishigago's eye, Santa Ocasio.
I.
Santa Rosa.
I.
Santa Fadella.
No. Okay, thank you members. HB 2061, the Animal Industry Special Fund. Any questions or concerns of the chair's recommendation would be to pass as is. Vice Chair vote side, Vice Chair.
Of the members present any voting with in opposition or with reservation, seeing non-motions adopted.
Thank you members. And then moving on to HB 1810 on the Environmental Advisory Council and what their quorum should be. Chair vote side.
Okay, of the members present, anyone voting with opposition or in reservations, seeing non-motions adopted.
Thank you members. HB 1712 on waste disposal. Yes, let's put ag lands first. Recommendation for Chair would be to vote will be to pass this as is. Chair vote side, any concerns? Vice Chair.
Okay, any members present voting with opposition or reservation, seeing non-motions adopted.
And the final measure, thank you members. The final measure is HB 1644 HD1 relating to environmental protection, food packaging. Chair vote side. Sir, okay, Vice Chair.
Of the members present, any voting with opposition or reservations, seeing no votes from me. One no vote from Santa Fadella. All others voting no. Thank you.
Okay, that's it members. Thank you very much. Thank you.